I'm assuming I still have to read this even if we-
If there are no speakers, you don't.
Okay, all right, okay. All right.
We have no speakers?
We have no speakers. It's December. All right, I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:03 PM. We'll take a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson. Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Scirvano.
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Here.
Dr. Harner.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no media students here for helping us with our broadcasts, so hopefully it will all go well, and if not, we can blame Mr. Schmidt or somebody, I don't know. But we have set aside this time on the agenda for a public hearing regarding the bond issue notification, and I have not received any requests for speakers tonight, so we will skip that and assume that all will be well. So unless there are anyone in the audience from the public who wants to speak on board on the bond issue, now you can do that if you'd like. Okay? Thank you. Now we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of students and staff, and Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will make his presentation.
Good evening and thank you. Two Rockford Public School teachers were recognized in November with Channel 13 WREX Teacher of the Week Award. Andrea Robbins from Johnson Elementary School told WREX that she wanted to be a special education teacher like her mother. She saw how her mom affected her students in positive ways, and she wanted to do that too. This is Ms. Robbins' third year teaching special education at Johnson. Rebecca Johnson from Fairview Early Childhood Center has spent four of her seven years teaching in RPS 205. Principal Darcy Dunn, who is also here this evening, described Ms. Johnson as a great example for other teachers. She celebrates diversity in her class and makes sure everyone in her class is successful. Congratulations to Ms. Robbins and Ms. Johnson, and thank you for your contributions to Rockford Public Schools. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding teachers and their work. And again, hello, hello, Principal Dunn, who is also here. Hello, Darcy. Thank you, sir. That is all.
Great job. We're very proud of all the great work that you do with our students. There are no public comments, so I'm going to skip reading that long couple of paragraphs, and I will ask for board member comments at this time. Are there any board member comments? Mr. Connor.
I met this last week with a local pastor who volunteers in our schools, and it reminded me of how wonderful our volunteers are, and I want to thank everyone in the local community and all you do to affect our students' lives. It's great to see the community so involved. There's always issues going on, but it's very, I think, heartening to see the level of volunteers and involvement with the community, so thanks to all the local volunteers.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I just want to thank and recognize some people. Last spring, there was a student, one of our students at Washington who was diagnosed with leukemia who died over the summer. And last spring, in a show of support for her and to try to find somebody who might be a stem cell match for her, Washington School sponsored a Be the Match program through the Northern Illinois Blood Bank, where you would go in and test to see whether your stem cells would be a match. And by doing that, you agree to be signed up through the bone marrow registry. One of the people who participated in that was notified about a month ago that their bone marrow matched a 40-year-old mother of two who has leukemia. And he went through the testing, and he was, in fact, a perfect match. And he has gone through the process, which is not an easy process, if you know anything about it, and his stem cells right now are on a flight going out of O'Hare. So a very, very small, bright spot out of an otherwise very dark period. Because of the people who participated in that, at least there's one person out there who maybe has a chance at being cured, so I'd like to recognize them.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just like to mention that last Tuesday evening, a group of us from the district, and Ms. McCulloch and I, Dr. Jarrett, Matt Vossberg, and a few others, got to attend the Community Foundation of Northern Illinois Dinner Event, and where the Community Foundation presented the school district with a check for $100,000 for Bandwagon II to support our music program, so kudos to the Community Foundation of Northern Illinois for their ongoing support of the Rockford School District, and with a promise of more to come, right, Matt? Okay, regarding college and support coming in the future, so Matt's working on that, so.
And isn't there-
Go ahead.
Didn't we start our petting, I mean, just to support that whole arts piece and music? We started our petting zoo this week with the instruments-
That's correct.
-for our fifth graders. I just keep hearing such great feedback on that and how wonderful it is for students to actually know what different instruments are before they have to choose one for their middle school experience, so.
Thank you to their kind donations and for being a great partner and community partner with the school district for all the good things that we do related to fine arts in this community and our programs. So we'll now move on then to consent items, which includes the meeting minutes of November 25th, 2014, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, and air travel, the bid recommendations IFB 15-14 for the Conklin-Johnson and Lathrop Elementary School window and univent replacements, the recurring contracts for the recruitment agreement for vacancies with the RPS district, recurring contract for professional development with Discovery Education, the recurring contract for professional development services with kids at the core, the other consent items Phantom Regiment In-Kind Contribution Facility Waiver, the $13,000 Kelly Williamson Grant Acceptance, three separate grants for different schools for $2,700 each for the CCLC grant acceptance. I'm sorry, you're right. There's a few more zeros in there, excuse me. It's not 2,700, it's $2,700, $700,000 each, and there are three of those, CCLC grant acceptance and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Dr. Harner. Are there any consent items that board members would like to have pulled? Mr. Rollins?
9A.
9A. Okay. Ms. Jackson?
10.
10, all three of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Pull them together, under 11F.
F? Okay.
And then C through E, under 11.
So C, D, and E, as a- Okay. Any others? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 9A, which is the IFB for Conklin-Johnson Lathrop Elementary School window and univents.
So moved.
Second. Moved and moved by Mr. Rollins and second by Mr. Connor. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
I was just reading the executive summary under the fiscal impact statement, and it shows that the majority of this is captured in the capital budget, with about $57,500 coming out of the building contingency and unassigned contingency. I'm assuming that that means that we exceeded the pre-bid estimates for this work. I just wanted confirmation of that, and then if that is, in fact, the case, I did see that we had only three bids on this, and I just kind of wanted to know what we're doing to try to drum up more competition on these projects.
To address the first question, of the $57,000, the first figure of $27,000 is contingency dollars that are allocated to those buildings already in the program, and then the $30,000 is from the general contingency. As far as the pre-bid attendees, there were nine attendees, but all but four of those were companies that were like at the subcontractor level, so the four that did attend, three submitted a bid, and we're trying, each time we send a project out to bid, to, in addition to the public notifications and the advertisements that the purchasing does, we try to give them a list of vendors that have shown interest in these types of projects and try to get them to reach out to those vendors in addition to the public notice, so.
Okay, well, I guess I would just urge you to continue trying to find ways to get more competition on these projects, because we were pretty fortunate, the first couple of years we were doing construction, the bids seemed to be coming in below our pre-bid estimates, and they seem to be trending upwards now. I guess a follow-up question I had was, so $27,000 is in the building contingency, $30,000 is coming out of the unassigned contingency, does that mean we no longer have any contingency left on that, those buildings? Or the particular building where there was an overrun?
This was a Redner Benson bid, so I would have to get that answer and get back to you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, it might be more appropriate to discuss these issues anyway with the Facilities Committee, and, you know, I would just suggest that you make sure you keep the Facilities Committee informed, particularly on matters like this.
One thing I will add is, this is going to be our third construction season, and the first two seasons, we haven't had to use any of the escalation contingencies, so we've been in pretty good shape so far, so.
Ms. McCulloch?
So you just kind of took the words out of my mouth, but my question, I was going to ask you a question, did it come to Ops? And then I thought, no, we have this new facilities oversight committee, so did it go there? But it didn't go there either, so do we have a process in place that you and will be taking these bids through, because that's the reason for this oversight committee? And I realize, they've only met twice, they have a third one coming up, or is that not coming through there?
So-
With bids, those would not- Right, not to accept or, I understand that, but to keep on track with the monetary, the fiscal component, because part of what this board put the oversight committee in place for was to look at things like trends, contingency, you know, how that money is being spent, and so all that information, it's not that it had to be approved, please don't misunderstand my statement, it's more a matter of that is part of the information that they're going to be using when they come back to the board at the end of next year.
Yes.
Dr. Harner? Yes, okay. It did not come to us, but we would be reviewing all that information-
Right.
-and including it as part of the report-
Next year.
Right. Go ahead.
So on Mr. Rollins' question, would it also be part of the conversation as to going to a building contingency versus the overall contingency? And I'm not understanding why you would even go to the overall contingency if you haven't used up what it was for the building, because-
Part of that was, we had funding identified in some of these projects that we had as a contingency particularly for this, so in each building, there's approximately $1.5 million in our current projects that we have contingencies out there, that we just left that money in there for any future work that we have up there in case we need it. So we're using up that building contingency first before we go and use up the unassigned contingency out there. With these three buildings, this is pretty much the last project we have out there. We've already done the boilers, we've already done the additions, now this is the windows, univents, and electrical upgrades. The only thing we have left that these buildings do is the interior finishes with the flooring and the paint.
So you are saying that, yes, you would have used up the building contingency before you go after the overall?
Correct.
Mr. Rollins?
I heard you say flooring and paint, what about ceiling tiles?
Sure.
Case by case, I can't, some of them, with a lot of our buildings, some of our buildings don't have ceiling tiles, they just have the roof deck, so as we get in there, we'll look at that and replace ceiling tiles as needed, along with painting the grid.
I just remember in Johnson, when we did the open house for the new facility, and I wasn't the only one who commented on this, you go in the main entrance and people are looking up, seeing these old stained ceiling tiles, before they went over to the brand-new-
And I think those ceiling tiles will be painted, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think they were lay-in tiles.
Okay. Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 9A.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, I'll next take a motion and a second. I think we could do, you said you could do all three of these together under 10, Ms. Jackson? 10. All right. You would like them, okay. All right, so I'll have to take a motion and a second to prove items 10A, B, and C, the recurring contracts.
So moved.
By Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Discussion and questions. Ms. Jackson?
I do, I have questions on, A, the recurring contract, I believe it is with the workplace.
Yes.
And why is it recurring? Did we, once, yeah, I can speak to that, please.
We currently have 196, little over openings, active openings, of those 190, little over 196, we would estimate approximately between 37 and 42 would be considered hard to fill, given the current staffing. What this request is, to provide the CHRO with a budgeted amount of money that she can use to use external resources to help us fill these hard-to-fill positions. At the desire of the board, the CHRO can either give you a declining balance every time a position is filled, or the CHRO can deliver the message to the board once the entire monies have been spent. Based on the fee schedule that has been provided to us, it's hopeful that we can use this money to fill between two and four positions. As you could imagine, it's the more senior level and the higher-priced positions that have been more difficult for us to fill. If you're asking why this, we chose the workplace, previously, several months ago, I did some quotes with other recruiters, bar none, this is the most reasonable relationship. We also have had successful relationships with the workplace in the past. I know the recruiter, the recruiter knows the district, the recruiter is very committed to the district, and I'm confident that this organization will provide a high level of service to the school district 205.
That wasn't a question I was going to ask, but thank you. So it's for two to four positions this contract covers?
We're hopeful.
And we have 196 vacancies?
Little over, yes.
Little over 196. So how does the money work? Do they, we pay them by the position? Do they get $25,000, and they take from that as they fill, what's the number?
If you look at the fee schedule on the agreement, it's very specific, so if we hired somebody between $40,000 and $75,000, the placement fee would be $5,000. So the sliding scale is dependent, so how fast the money gets depleted depends on what positions we are able to fill.
And since there are two to four targeted, what are those positions?
We're going to go after, we've got the list here, once we, if you approve this, we will prioritize the usage of these dollars to figure out how fast we can get the right people in the positions utilizing these dollars to the best of our ability.
Okay, and so this recruitment aligns with our diversity plan that we have in place?
Always.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Powers?
I was going to ask about the prioritization, so you answered my question there. Could we just get, you know, the top 10, once you have them prioritized?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have the growth, all the list, but yes, definitely, can do that.
Any other questions? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the recurring contracts.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
I'll next take a motion for the approval of the CLC grant applications, A, B, and C, which is items 11, C, D, and E.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion on the CCLC grant acceptance? Ms. Jackson?
I just have one. We get student achievement data every year for these, right? Depends on the-
Dr. Wolf?
So every school does student achievement data with the Illinois School Report Card. We also have our external evaluator, the University of Illinois Rockford, that does an evaluation of the program in line with ISB protocols. That contract, we would anticipate bringing before you in January 13 for these three grants. That does include student achievement, along with attendance, discipline, and several other measures.
And it's given to us when? I just want to be able to mark my calendar, so I know when to look for that data.
It's normally in about November. It depends on when the state has released the data. We also have a public meeting to discuss the results with our partners, any interested member, and we have our evaluator from the University of Illinois Rockford, who comes and presents at that meeting.
Any other questions? Not that I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of Items 11, C, D, and E, the CCLC grant acceptance.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion and, second, to approve the Freedom of Information Log, which is Item 11F.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Just have a request to be copied on, information was given out 11, the 1117 request, and then the 121 request.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the role on approval of Freedom of Information Log.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Bonnie Spurling as the Interim Director of Fine Arts, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items for student discipline, in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited, prohibited from being on school grounds or school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Recommended expulsion for student AM1 is held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year being executed on or before the next school board meeting. The following student is expelled for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year and the first semester of the fiscal year 2015-16 school year. That's student SRG3, and the suspension has been upheld for the following student, JH4. The following students have been granted conditional probationary agreements. Those are students LMW2, MC5, NG6, ZK7, KJ8, RC9, MH10, TB11, and IC12. Is there a motion in a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any items that the Board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Powers?
All of the student discipline as a single-
13, 13 and 14.
Yeah, that's okay. And then the 12B, like the way.
Ms. Jackson? That cover it? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the consent item, closed session consent items not pulled.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, I will take a motion in a second to approve Item 12B, which is the HR organizational report and addendum.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. There is no discussion. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of Item 12B, the HR organizational report and addendum.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
Okay, I'll take a motion in a second now for the approval of the Items 13 and 14, which are the closed session student discipline.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of Items 13 and 14.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Abstain.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one abstain.
Thank you. Well, now, our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. I'll turn that mic over to Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to express my gratitude to the Board for allowing me to have the opportunity to head to Washington DC to attend the National College Opportunity Day of Action, have the opportunity to be in a very small group setting with the Vice President, the First Lady, and the President, the Secretary of Education. There were a number of very prominent people in the country that were very focused on aligning K-12 resources and even preschool through 12th grade resources with community college and, and colleges, to make sure that college is affordable and accessible. We have a lot of work to do as a country, but it was inspiring to be in a room of people that want to help make sure that we make progress as a country in that area. So, it was really an honor to be part of the Northern Illinois University proposal that was submitted, and have a chance to hear firsthand some of the things that are, that we could potentially be a part of moving forward. I also want to encourage any members of the community who have not had the opportunity to weigh in on our strategic planning process. We are getting ready to move to the part of the third step in the process where we start to, we move from the SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, so kind of where we were or where we are. And at our last meeting, we started talking about where we want to be in the future, and this meeting on Monday that we're going to have next is going to connect those two in terms of how are we going to get there, and we're going to start to talk about strategies. And really, looking forward to talking about that with the Board in greater detail. We do have representatives from the Board there, and we're hoping the community will continue to weigh in. There is no way to pick the, when you're representing 190,000 people that live in our school district footprint, and it's really hard to pick the exact perfect 60 people. So, we want to make sure whether they're parents, students, employees, interested taxpayers in the community, please take time through different, through our website or other opportunities to weigh in on the work that we're doing to strengthen that plan. We want it to be the readiness 2020 to be something that truly guides our district moving forward, and appreciate those that have been involved so far and look forward to that continued work. We hope to have it wrapped up in early January and start working on action planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports. Ms. McCulloch, the Education Committee report.
The Education Committee met in this room last week, Monday, December 1st. We had three items on the agenda, they were all updates, and I just thought I'd give you a little summary. The first one was on empowerment zones currently, and by empowerment zones, it's schools chosen because they have the highest poverty with the lowest achievement rates. We currently have nine. Haskell, McIntosh, Kishawaki, King, Byer, Walker, Ellis, Nelson, and Lewis Lemon. All the schools have behavior intervention specialist, specialists. Four of the schools have math coaches. We have, this past year, starting this, this, I guess in July, restored Haskell to year-round, a true year-round program. They had their first intercession, and they had an 84% participation, and the educators that worked to oversee that intercession were the teachers that are at the school. So, they had, they showed us some slides of some fun stuff that they did, but also, one of, one of the activities that they're doing, they're trying to get students interested in chess, and so they play chess ball. And you have to play chess because they like dodgeball, right? And so, they have to play chess to then participate in the dodgeball, so it's chess ball. And I guess they, they're really getting together a group of kids that, that are actually engaged in the chessboard now. By the way, there, that was one of the items that was a cost increase for this year to our empowerment zones. It cost, the change to the full year-round because of the added instruction, and that was $41,500. We've also added APs to three of our empowerment zone schools, Ellis, Nelson, and Lewis Lemon. That cost was an additional 258,000, so for this year, our empowerment zone total is One of the things that has been the focus of the empowerment zones this year has been professional development. 250 of the teachers over the last year have attended and participated in development for a program called a Connected School, and we've also got side-by-side coaching for our teachers for the math instruction. We have a list of schools with improvements, and we've, this has already been brought to the Board, but just for, to complete the picture, the combined scores in reading and math have increased this last year in five of our empowerment zone schools. The reading scores have increased in four schools, and the math scores have increased in seven schools. All four with a math coach, plus an additional three. So, a lot of good information about what's being done in those. Our second report was on the charter schools. We have a charter school that is up for renewal this year, and that would be CICS. We had a conversation about the process. Looking for my notes. It's focused on what, it's, it's driven by Illinois Charter School law, and that, the verbiage for that is included in each of the agreements with the school board, with this school board. They did, CICS did submit their application for renewal on a timely basis, and the application was considered complete. A charter school may be revoked or not renewed if the local school board clearly demonstrates they did not do any of the following. So, there's four criteria. A was be to commit a material violation of any of the condition standards or procedures set for in the charter. B would be to fail to meet or make reasonable progress toward achievement of the content standards or pupil performance standards identified in the charter. C is failed to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management, or D, violating any provision of the law from which the charter school was not exempt. CICS has been a wonderful partner with the Rockford Public Schools, and they have demonstrated a willingness to share information, and they, through their annual reports and audit, have met the criteria for, in that they have no material violation, they have met the accepted standards, and have not violated any provision of the law. The area of failed to meet or make reasonable progress toward achievement will be the focus moving forward, and that is due to some of the low test scores that they've had at CICS. The timeline going forward for this charter renewal process, we've already had a site visit, or the District Accountability Group had a site visit, and that was on November 10th. February 2nd, the final report from the Accountability Department will come to the Education Committee, and on February 10th, the final report will be given to the school board. On March 10th, the final recommendation will be given to, by the Accountability Department, and following, followed by an open hearing and a school board decision, because the school board, prior to making a decision by law, always has an open hearing so that people can come in and comment. The third and final report that we had was on our virtual learning. Previously, or I should say, last year, the report on virtual learning, there was a lot of concern over the viability of charter schools coming in, wanting to have a virtual charter school. Due to some legislation, there's been a pause in the ability of charters to get that sort of charter, the virtual school, so it's less of a threat, and the focus of our virtual learning has changed. I don't know, the Board may remember that in the fall of 2013, we approved Paragon Development Systems to come in and do an investigation of RIT. They looked at nine areas, staff interviews and perceptions, IT leadership, computer storage, backup, discovery, network, information security, active directory, exchange messaging, product lifecycle, all those. The results of the nine major investigations are what is driving the IT projects and priorities, and is specifically what is helping to drive what we're doing in virtual learning in the district. The major finding from that assessment was that there's a lack of professional development specifically allocated to assisting our teachers during the school year in lesson planning, curriculum design, and technology usage. So, we have some IT systems, we have smart boards in place in classrooms, we have software, but it's not being used to the extent that we'd like to see it being used. And so, the focus has become professional development for teachers, staff, for administrators, and to that end, the district has hired two professionals to provide on-demand training and professional development in the schools, and they're prioritizing the virtual assessment tools, the cloud collaboration tools, and the current curricular tools. We've also changed the focus of our virtual programs through Illinois Virtual School and Florida Virtual Schools, so that students are using them primarily for algebra, because we have the highest failure rate in that class in our students in the high schools, for credit recovery, and for adjunctive AP classes where, especially where we don't have enough students in school to fill a classroom, an AP classroom. We will not be meeting in January. Our next meeting for the Education Committee will be in this room on February 2nd at 5:30, and there will be an agenda posted online before that. That ends my report.
That's the right date? Okay. February 2nd sounds like a Sunday to me. Maybe it's February 3rd.
No.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
As in the case with the other charter schools, will be, will there be a time set aside for the Board if they so choose to walk through CICS?
I asked Mr. Reese to be available for any questions, and he so kindly has agreed to do so.
Yes, I'm actually speaking with, I'm, I'm going to CICS tomorrow, and that's one of my discussion points, because I knew Ms. McCulloch was going to update on everybody. I knew there was at least one Board member that would want to know that, and so I'm, I don't have that for you right now, but I, I will let you know.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rollins, the Operations Committee report.
Thank you. The Operations Committee met here on December 2nd at 5:30 PM. It was a very full agenda and a very long meeting. We went through prior year healthcare summary, also did, in conjunction with that, a benefits review with the year-to-date cost by category and proposed cost avoidance strategies. Sort of the cliff notes of that is that our healthcare costs actually did finally go up last year after going down, I think for two successive years in a row, but they did go up less than what we had budgeted, so that's the good news. Midway through this year, they're continuing to go up, but within, within the amount that we have budgeted. Probably, the other, I think, thing that we talked about is that we've probably implemented most of the major programs that the consultants, our benefits consultants have identified in, for ways that we can save money. Some of those, I think, will still take some time to implement, and will still have some cost savings potential as they get implemented, but right now, probably most of the big rocks have been identified and, and are being addressed. We had an extensive discussion about an RFP for managed print services. There was, I think, some concern on the part of the committee about the evaluation process, and whether the evaluation factors have been clearly communicated to the vendors and uniformly applied, and that has been pulled back by the administration. I believe that RFP has been canceled, and they'll be looking at whether or not they should reissue that RFP. We looked at, we discussed district-wide contract administration. That's really a continuing discussion topic for the Operations Committee, as well as the Board. We're all aware that the district struggles to manage its contracts, to keep track of all of its contracts. There was a discussion about how we might centralize that management, what that would look like, whether that would be simply a process, personnel and process implementation, whether that would require some sort of software that we don't currently have available to us. There were no recommendations being made, it's just a continuing conversation, and we ask the administration to continue to look at that. We looked at a purchasing review for the past year with the district's major contracts, and what the pre-bid estimates were for the contracts. This is outside of the capital plan. This is just regular purchasing, and then what the actual costs were, and there was an analysis that showed that for overall, that most of those contracts came in below the pre-bid estimates, and that we actually were able to purchase services and goods for less money than had been estimated. Mr. Schmidt and Anita Shower presented a life cycle analysis, what that really is. We've had a discussion about trying to create a plan and platform going forward where we actually- actually plan our maintenance, and I continue to call it capital refreshment, even apart from the capital plan, so that we don't get into the same situation that we found ourselves in a few years ago, where the buildings had not been appropriately maintained. Mr. Schmidt shared with us where we're at on that. They do have a software program for that, where they are loading in very detailed information on a building-by-building basis, as far as what we have, how old what we have is, and the process then will be to load in, as we go forward, what the replacement cycle is for pretty much everything. And I made the comment there, and I'll make the comment here, what I would like to see us do is couple that with the budget process, so that every year, as we consider the budget, I would like to see us also have a report on what that system is showing in terms of what we should be repairing, or replacing, or maintaining, and whether or not that has been budgeted, and if it has not been budgeted, then what the shortfall is and why it has not been budgeted. We had an update on the job shadowing program. You might recall that the board approved this job shadowing concept, where we would ask some of our contractors to provide jobs to people within certain locations within the city. The update that we got from Mr. Bailing was that Rockford Structures to date has provided employment of approximately 1,320 hours between two individuals, which is over their budgeted amount, and, looking for the other contractor, oh, Visering. Visering has employed approximately six workers, and they've worked, I'm skimming here, 1,340, I'm sorry, three, I'm sorry, 3,450 hours so far. Now, the concept was really that this was supposed to be a gateway for people to potentially get into the building trades, and there was a discussion about that. One of the community committee members is Glenn Turpoff, who's the immediately retired executive director of the Northern Illinois Building Contractors Association, and he confirmed that when these projects are done, certainly the concept is, if these people show that they can work with contractors, and that they can show up on time, and that they will be fast-tracked by the trades to enter into the trades, if that's what they're interested in doing. We don't have a report on whether that's happened, because it's premature, they're still currently working on their current projects, and so I think what we really need to do is make sure we follow that, keep a tag on it, and make sure we follow up and see whether that actually happened. We received an update on the communications department, or sort of an overview of expenditures over the past few years, and staffing levels over the past few years. Mr. Dotson had a conflict, so Mr. Lewis gave that report. It does show an increase over the past three years in both the number of staffing and the overall budget. Mr. Lewis then also gave us a report on some benchmark data that we've been looking at, or he's been looking at, which he's been getting through, I'm not going to remember the acronym. Council of Great City Schools, right. These are just sort of benchmark points that they use, this council uses, to look at sort of financial efficiency for an organization, and he's continuing to look at those to see whether or not they make sense for us to use, or whether there may be some outlying data in there with, generated by districts that have some anomalies that make them different from us. Then, we then had a presentation on the, on a human resources information system known as Kronos, which is going to be a discussion item later on in the agenda, and I will simply note that the operations committee, I believe unanimously, recommended approval of that. We had a presentation on the audited financial statements, which, again, we'll have our final discussion about that tonight. And then finally, this was not a discussion item, because it was too late, but I'd asked Mr. Lewis to address our reserve status at the next operations committee meeting. It just happened to be looking at the policy. It does say that we're supposed to look at that once a year in July. I'd like to get us in the habit of maybe taking that through operations in July, and then reporting that to the board. We're supposed to make sure, or try to make sure, that we maintain 25% of our operating budget as a reserve, and I did see in a press release that we're at 28%. I'd just like to get that as a formal report. That was the operations committee. We will be meeting next, we will be meeting in January, on January 6th at 5:30 PM. Thanks.
Is the committee meeting? Dr. Hunter, Facility Oversight Planning Committee.
Has not met since the last board meeting?
Okay.
But will be meeting on December 16th at 7:00 PM in the fourth floor conference room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. We are now on to action items for tonight's meetings. Our first action item is 17A, which is the January 1st, 2015 Stop-Loss Contract. Is there a motion and a second to approve the Stop-Loss Contract?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCulloch. Any questions or discussion? See, now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the January 1, 2015 Stop-Loss Contract.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item tonight is fiscal year 14 audited financial statements. Is there a motion and a second to approve the audited financial statement?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Hunter. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
So, Mr. Lewis did actually, and I appreciate it, send out to everybody a synopsis of, which actually shows performance on a fund basis, and so I did have a couple of questions based on that. I see that on a, for the year, we actually had a loss of about 1.3 million on the IMRF Social Security Fund. Is that simply because we employed more people than what we had budgeted?
No, it's a combination of both revenue and expenditures, because, of course, we have an aggregate tax levy cap that we can spread among the funds. Now, while we can levy as we so desire, we can levy as needed for IMRF and Social Security, we wanted to keep our aggregate levy flat year-over-year, which is exactly what we did. So, while we had raises for FY14, so the commensurate benefit increased also, our option was to shift some of our levy into the IMRF fund, and reduce the levy somewhere else to keep the levy flat, or to raise the levy. So it was a combination of the two.
She just indicated, so we didn't change the levy, so the revenue was consistent with what we expected?
The revenue was consistent with what we expected.
The expenses were more because we had more employees and/or higher wages, and then associated higher benefit costs.
Higher wages. Remember the ASME units? We had the 10% as opposed to the 3% that was in the budget, that led it, of course, to that fund, funds deficit.
So what's the fix going forward? I mean, are we going to be able to levy appropriately for IMRF Social Security, to make sure we don't run a deficit in that fund every year?
We know we've had some hefty discussions about revenues and where they're headed, and our intent is, of course, to keep the levy flat year-over-year. We're going to run into some staff oohs here moving forward. We're doing all we can internally right now to present a balanced budget to the board for fiscal year 15, and we may have to shift some levy from one fund to the other to make IMRF Social Security look better, but then it's going to impact one of the other operating funds. Those are just the facts.
Okay, Mr. Rollins?
So then, the other question was about the food service, which I guess is a proprietary fund, and at the operations committee, the auditors actually said they recommended not even reporting that as a separate fund, but I think it is interesting information for us. What we are seeing is that for the second year in a row, we've had a loss there, and it's 1.3 million. I think we've heard explanations for how that's happened. Really, all I'm really interested in is what are we doing to make sure it's not going to hap, continue to happen going forward?
We'll bring that forward as I recommend a corrective action plan we have for the Nutrition Services Department at the next operations committee meeting.
Any other questions? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the audited financial statements for 2014.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, we are now on to new business, and the administration has requested the board to suspend the rules to consider the next item, which is the Certified Speech and Language Pathologist (PS) contract. Is there a motion and a second to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCulloch. Miss Powers, was it? Okay, I'm sorry. Trying to do two things at once here. Coordinator call the role on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second to approve the Certified Speech and Language Pathologist (PS).
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Hunter. Are there any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I do have a question. How many more will come through, do you know, or is this it, or?
The works to take forward. I have contracted agencies, four of them, looking, and when they find a viable candidate, we interview, and if we feel that it's someone that can work well in our community, then that contract will come forward. So, at this point, I don't have anything more to bring forward. This is the last one.
Or no?
I would absolutely call these one of the hard-to-fill positions, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the role.
Dr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next items are going to be presented by Dr. Wolf. I don't see, oh, there he is, back there. I'm going to have you do 18B first, and then we'll do 18C through J maybe together.
Thank you. 18B is the grant evaluation contract with the University of Illinois Rockford, which would support the professional development for arts educators. We're required by that nearly 1.3 million grant to have an external evaluator. Contained within the funds of the grant are all of the dollars we need to pay for this evaluation, so we're asking the board to approve contract to allow us to use UIR services.
Any discussion on this one? This will be presented at our January 13th board meeting for a vote, so now I feel do items C through J together.
The next two teaching artists, Ms. Stuart Baker and Ms. Kate Kilgore, are teaching artists for us in two different grant programs. The Education Through the Arts Program, which is funded by a grant from the Community Foundation of Northern Illinois, and our Rockford Arts Infusion Grant. So their contracted amounts reflect serving in both different grant programs. The other teaching artists are teaching only in the federally funded Rockford Arts Infusion Grant, so there is this little bit less. One contract in there that reflects two teaching artists, they both work for the Rockford Dance Company, and so you'll notice that that contract is exactly double, or 34,600, the single funding teaching artist. And then we have Marilyn Lillabridge in there, who is our instructional coach, for a total of 240 hours, as allowed under the grant, a total of $12,000. All of the expenditures for all of the teaching artists are fully covered by either the federal Rockford Arts Infusion Grant, or the Community Foundation Ada Program Grant.
Will these, I have a question, will these be in specific schools, or will they be for all of our teachers that do this particular type of fine arts?
So, the Ada schools are schools that applied to be part of this program, and so that grant was written a little over a year ago to serve elementary and middle school students. And so, it's listed on there right now, it's Barbara and Lincoln, and I forget, the third school that's in the fall for Ada. RAY is the program that seeks to enliven and enrich and engage students in under-grade level math classes through arts infusion. And so, our treatment schools for that program are Kennedy and Flynn, and there are nine elementary feeder schools that are, again, listed in the executive summary. And so, these teaching artists would serve in those 11 schools under RAY, the current three schools under Ada, and the three or four schools that have yet to apply to be part of the late spring cohort, spring of 2014, 2015.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Ms. Jackson?
So I do have a question. We approved a contract under $10,000 for Lotta Stewart. Is that not the same person that's on this, or separate people, or?
No, it is, in fact, the same person.
Okay.
So, we wanted to try out some protocols to get services directed to our students the proper way, so we did partial your contracts to make sure that all of the protocols worked, and then this is an addendum to extend the number of hours and the time period under which those under $10,000 contracts. So it takes us to the end of the school year.
Okay, so we approved her contract. It looks like it's $99,125. That's it. So what are you bringing back to us?
So that addendum will take it over $20,000 and get us, so the original under $10,000 contract was services to conclude no later than January 31, 2015, and now this addendum to that contract will extend it to the end of the school year.
How many hours has she done already? And when did she start?
Okay, she started in September. I would have to, I could tell you the exact hours, we could send that out in the board report, I don't know. We're probably at about 35 to 40% of the original contract hours.
And then, I was looking through on one of them, it's Pam Peterson. There's a note that says need, that the planning time does not seem adequate. Has that been addressed, or?
It has. It was in part a definition of terms, so we got there, and people feel good about that now.
Any other questions? Ms. McCulloch?
So that under 10 contract, will that come out of grant money as well?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay, this will be presented at our January 13th, 2015 meeting for a vote. Mr. Lewis, you are up next with our next two items. General Obligation Limited School Bonds.
Starting with item K. So this is a resolution for the board to actually take action on, you want to be taking action on, of course, this evening, to give the administration the latitude to sell up to $20 million in health life safety. We've got 18 million that was a part of the adopted 10-year facilities plan. The other 2 million, of course, there are other health life or safe, health life safety related expenditures that take place in our recurring health life safety fund. So, this doesn't suggest that we absolutely without fail sell in 20 million, it just gives us the latitude, if market conditions allow, to sell up to $20 million. I've got Mrs. Ann Noble here tonight, from our underwriters, and collectively, we'll answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, so the-
Yeah, so the original, the facilities plan that was approved by the board came with some revenue assumptions, which were the... included the $18 million that would actually be issued in two different issuances of health, life, safety bonds, and then an additional $500,000 that would be directed to the capital plan annually from the Fund 92 Health, Life, Safety levy. So the question I've got is, if you issue $20 million, is there... do we have a health, life, safety levy in excess of the $500,000 that's been dedicated to the capital plan, or are you using some of that $500,000 now to service $2 million more worth of bonds?
That's correct. You would be giving us the latitude, again, provided that market conditions allow, to use some of that $500,000 to sell bonds.
And I guess my concern with doing that is that it changes the assumptions underlying the revenue projections for the capital plan, because you'll now be taking money, some money, and maybe not a lot of money, given what interest rates are right now. You'll be taking some money that would have been directly spent on capital projects and applying it instead against interest debt service.
Yeah, let me clarify. The reason that we would take the amount from 18 to 20 million, if we do, is because interest rates are slightly lower now than when we did the original model, so that you could fit the additional $2 million in within the tax rate cap that you've set and still be able to pay it back at that same tax rate, achieve some additional project funds, and not affect that $500,000 that you've budgeted from an operating budget standpoint to be a cash contribution to the capital plan. So it's literally just taking advantage of slightly better market conditions to add additional principal to the bond issue and still stay within that tax rate cap. The other option would be to keep it at the $18 million amount, and you would have less interest expense for the bond issue and can pay it off slightly more quickly. It's not impacting that $500,000 of annual contribution.
Is it affecting the length of the bonds?
No, it's affecting the average life of the bonds. The final payback of the bonds is still 20 years, but it does extend the average life slightly, like 2/10 of a year.
Okay. Dr. Herner?
So is there an operational reason to borrow $2 million more?
Only that you have a very long list of capital needs, and this is a way to fund $2 million of it. I think your health, life, safety approvals came in over $18 million.
You mean the list of stuff that we sent down for approval, or that we accumulated to send to the state for approval?
Yes, exactly.
How much more than 18 million?
Do you have that number, Todd? It's just under 19, right? And that doesn't count what you had submitted earlier in the year that you were planning to pay from operations.
So are we expanding the facilities plan to more than $250 million now? Are these are new projects that we hadn't previously identified, so they're really outside of what the parameters of the original deal, or...
There are projects that we put in there. We put in there, they're all life-safety-eligible to use these life-safety bonds, and they're projects that we have in there that if above and beyond it, they would be taken out of the general obligation or some of the other fundings that we have committed in there.
So these are things...
So there's still projects in the capital plan.
So these are new projects that were identified outside of the original 250?
No. They were part of it because there's a lot of the items within the 250 could potentially be life-safety-eligible, but we were only looking at 18 million to... for this bond to put into this program. We submitted over 18 million. For one, we wanted to make sure in case the state denied any of them, and those things, that's why we went above the 18 million. But these were projects that are still identified in the capital plan that if we can't take them out of the health, life, safety funds, then we would take them out of some other funding source that we have in there. And part of it, we also have in this plan, we have a half a million dollars a year from our levy that we're actually putting towards this plan. So one of the things we could potentially do is if we get this extra, whatever, an extra $1 million or what have you, this is potential work that we could put towards the extra $16 million in deferred maintenance that we have out there, because all of that deferred maintenance is life-safety-eligible.
Okay, so that is extra. That's outside of the 2...
That's outside of the...
The 16 million is outside of the 250, so we're choosing to borrow the $2 million to put towards the 16 million, is what, in essence, you're saying. Because otherwise, why would we decide to pay interest on stuff that we'd already planned to spend anyway? If we're going to decide to spend $2 million on toward deferred maintenance, then that's okay. I mean, we could decide that, I guess.
And I will tell you, the resolution doesn't obligate you to sell the 20 million, but it does authorize it. So at some point before we actually sell bonds, toward the end of January, we would need direction either from you directly or to the administration to us about if you want us to hold it at 18, we'll hold it at 18. This is simply a cap. Once you approve the... if you approve the resolution at 18, we can't fund 19. So it doesn't obligate you to 20, but it authorizes it, and then you all will have to provide the proper feedback for how you want us to proceed at the end of January.
Mr. Rollins?
I just think it's also appropriate for discussions like this to be run through the Facilities Committee, because I think that's one of the reasons we set it up, especially if we're going to change any of the funding assumptions, or, you know, talk about funding things differently. I think it would be helpful for me, anyway, to have it vetted by that committee. Plus, that committee is going to have to keep track of the money, anyway. That's one of their functions, so I do think it would be helpful, regardless of whether we pass this tonight, if this is a discussion about whether you issue those bonds, that you run through that committee.
Any other questions? On this item, this will come before the board for our January 13th board meeting. Ms. McCullough?
Well, since that Facilities Committee is meeting...
Next week.
Next week, and we don't meet again to... for this as an action item until January, certainly they can vet... vet prior to our next meeting in our vote, if they would be so inclined.
Okay. Good suggestion. Okay, Mr. Lewis, the second item. Al, the...
At the last board meeting, we had a pretty robust discussion, of course, and we did it at Ops last month, about proceeding to sell the additional $39 million of general obligation bonds. The board, I think you all were in general consensus of proceeding as such, and the next resolution just authorizes us to proceed in doing so.
Any questions on that item? And this will be presented for approval at our January 13th board meeting. Our next item is the Chrono Software Agreement, which is going to be presented by Lori Burke and Linda Lumpkin.
Good evening. In your packet, I sent you the presentation that was made to the Operations Committee, which detailed the partnership that Human Resources and Finance have entered into to achieve two goals, actually. One is to onboard a timekeeping system as a result of ACA, to make sure that we are able to meet all of the rules governing the Affordable Care Act as it pertains to workforce and workforce hours. Secondarily to that, data and the use for data, timely, efficient, and accurate data is really a crucial need in this district. And so, from a HRIS perspective, which currently the district does not have. We do not have a robust Human Resources information system. And when I talk about timely and accurate data, that this board should be able to get very quickly, and it should be very accurate, are things like Hispanic control report, retention and attrition and types of leaves, teacher seniority and demographics, how many people we're onboarding, how much it costs to hire each of our people, the time it takes to hire our people. We should be able to provide a robust workforce analysis for the board. We should provide open positions on a very regular basis, and I could go on and on. For organizations that have an HRIS embedded, these are the types of things that are our normal standard operating procedure. Currently, we, as most of you know, we have a very paper-driven process. We do not have a single repository for the data having to do with the employees that work in this district. And what the HRIS piece, this will do is provide that single-source data repository, so we have one place to go for all information that has to do with our people. What that will... does not mean is that we will not compromise the integrity of our Sun Guard business system, where the information will stay, and we will import and export data as required from HRIS need, as well as from a payroll and a finance perspective. In addition, we will be able to bridge that gap that I think is really important, to bridge the gap between analytics and actuals, and we will have data-driven decisions, which, at the end of the day, should result in a much more fiscally responsible district, and as importantly, timely, accurate data that can be delivered efficiently and effectively. The budgeted amount that was put in for the timekeeping system, there was knowledge ahead of time before I came onboard and started working with Mr. Lewis with regard to the need for HRIS data. There was a budget put in place of $1 million to meet the needs of the timekeeping requirement. What you'll see in your packet is the request is to have a year-one expenditure of $836,905. And at the conclusion of the Operations Committee, what the committee asked me to do, and we had an illness in HR tonight, and unfortunately, I don't have this data... copies of data, but I will have copies of this for you before we bring this to the vote. Several things that I was asked to do to dive deeper into the justification of this expenditure, things like the leveraging, what we did to leverage the contract, gaps filled by the project, what our short-term investment is, our offsetting costs, risk reduction, our timelines, et cetera. First of all, the fact that we negotiated with one provider to do both of these was an immense, immense opportunity to leverage the cost of both systems. So as a result, between 60% and 75% was able to be leveraged from an HRIS and a timekeeping perspective, that if we would buy it separately and have siloed systems, would have ended up costing the district more. The total year-one cost investment for the HRIS piece is $336,800, and for the payroll timekeeping piece, it's $500,105. The total two-year cost is about $924,500, $600, and that breaks out to $372 for HRIS and about $550 for timekeeping. A full three-year commitment with the licensing and the maintenance fees for the... over the three-year period will total $1,015,829.78. So for a budgeted amount of $1 million that we budgeted in FY14, we are able to pretty much get a three-year relationship that will provide not only the timekeeping piece, but also a very robust HRIS piece. For return on investment, we had a fairly good conversation in Ops with regard to the difficulty it is to kind of put my finger on anything specific, but we did the best we could, and we did kind of a fat-finger look at how quickly we can get this turned around. I come from a background where an IRR has to be 18 months, more or less, and when we took... we came up with about $400,000 that we thought we could save in the first year, and I thought that was, okay, that's being pretty aggressive, so let's just take about 80 grand out of that, since we really can't quantify it, which brings it down to about $320,000. There are numbers in here that... almost to the $280,000 that I feel really comfortable with, that we really can get. The lack... the not having the paper-driven process, the fact that we will not have to hire a report writer, because with a robust HRIS system, we will have many more just absolutely normal, natural reports, and we also have an ad hoc piece driven, built in. So the fact that we won't have to do an additional staff person to learn or do report writing is significant. Also, just increased department efficiencies between HR and Finance is going to just save... we fat-fingered it to about $90,000 all in, given the fact that so much of it is so labor-intensive right now. Absent management, and the fact that we could, and I'm putting in some numbers here from the timekeeping perspective as well, to come up with what the cost savings would be. If we would get fined if we don't meet the requirements of ACA, the minimum fine for the district would be somewhere in the area of $60,000. And so obviously, we would not have to have to save that, or have to spend that. I also, Mr. Connor in particular, asked for a timeline for both timekeeping and the HRIS, and I have it, and you can see it. It's nice colors. I don't have it electronically, but I will get it to you electronically. What I can tell you is that each time, each of the issue, each of the initiatives, timekeeping and HRIS, has about a 19-week conversion time, and we made a commitment to start with timekeeping and then follow up with the HRIS piece, recognizing there will be some overlap. It won't be first 19 weeks, stop, and then start with the HRIS piece. We will have some sort of overlap, so we will get started on the HRIS piece before the timekeeping piece is fully implemented. Documentation of data elements. I have had several conversations since the Operations Committee. I have all of the data here, the documents here. I'm comfortable that they will be able to meet our needs. I am comfortable with the documentation. I talked to, during the Operations Committee, for those of you who weren't there, Mr. Bushel from an outside legal counsel, was our contract evaluator, and he was immensely detail-oriented, and we dove very deeply into this contract. I personally was involved in these contract language negotiations, probably 20 to 25 hours. Mr. Bushel had a lot more than that. So I am confident that we are going to get what we asked for, and that at the end of the day, not only will the timekeeping needs be met by this district, but as importantly, a more robust, single-sourced opportunity to really provide data that's accurate and timely, and by eliminating a lot of double and triple, and sometimes four people touching data, which, as we all know, offers an opportunity for mistakes.
Questions? Mr. Connor?
The HRIS in particular, I think, is worth just a few comments. First of all, it's a standard practice in the industry that large organizations, because of the complexity and the thousands of people, it's a standard practice, so our need for it is clear. I think one of the things that I've suggested, and I've talked to both Ms. Burke and Mr. Wiesman on this, I think it is important for us to have an overall plan for how we're going to deal with data. HRIS and... is considered a specific application which we are desperately needing, without a doubt. But I think the one thing that I would like to make sure is that Mr. Wiesman, as the one who represents IT, could show overall, in terms of planning, where the HRS... HRIS would fit. I think it's very important, because we have a lot of general data needs, as we've talked about as a board quite a bit. The other thing that I'll say is, there are key costs in this, which I think coming to operations on a regular basis on this one will be important, because there's many stages of these typically, and I think that there are some details of implementation. The good news is that there is integration, which sounds to me like it's promised to be integrated, which is a big deal. Every time you have integration, that costs you money. So the better it is with those kind of capabilities out of the box, the better. So I just think it's still important that we come have metrics. And the other part is that I will say... And the other part is that I will say, and Ms. Burke did address this, is we do want to look at the offsetting, not just costs, but risks. And the example that I would use, and I'm sure a lot of people would understand this, is over time in a big organization, there's a lot of mistakes that are made. And clearly, one of the, if you will, intangible benefits would be, I would hope, better employee satisfaction and the fact that we have a lot of things that are much more well-done, a lot fewer issues, and that hopefully, over time, this will really pay benefits. So in general, as our local IT nerd on the board, I think the direction is good. We clearly need this, but there's a lot of things about the blocking and tackling. I'd want to make sure that we put in on a regular basis for operations and that things like the schedule and how we're going to implement are very clear. So, but again, I think there's a lot of good work here and again, this is a necessary piece of software.
Thank you. Ms. Powers?
Couple of questions. One is, so does the system have built-in safety checks? So I'm going to completely dumb down Mr. Connor here, but, I mean, the way you have to put in your password twice to confirm that what you put in is right. So in terms of being able to affect somebody's pay or any of those kinds of things, there's checks built into the system?
That is table stakes for these types of system, table stakes.
Got it.
Mr. Lewis and I will decide who gets all access, who gets this much access.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. That's critical.
And then are there links in terms of, so for example, if I'm going to post a job, first and foremost, I have to have a job description written, I have to have required skills, and all of those things are linked so that if you are not bilingual, you cannot apply to be a bilingual para or those, I mean, are those kinds of links in place?
Yes. You know the old saying, I'm not a techie at all either, but I know what I want out of it. And you've heard garbage in, garbage out. So yes, they're in there. What we have to do is fill in the blanks with what the criteria is and it will give us exactly what we want out based on what we put in.
Okay. And then my last question is, I see that for years two and three, you know, it's like $88,000, $89,000. For years four and beyond, would we expect that cost to go down or to go up or to stay pretty flat? What do we know about years four and beyond?
That's a great question. Technology changes so quickly. There is no way that they will look past three years. So what those maintenance costs might be, what the upgrade costs might be, we might decide that we're going to be fine with this level for the next 10 years. It's not really rocket science, what we're getting here. This, an HRIS is pretty, pretty standard stuff, as Mr. Connor recognized. So I can't speak to that. I can tell you that we were very, very, very aggressive in our contract negotiations with them and they know that we are, A, want to be in this for the long haul, but B, we're not going to give away the store.
Okay. And I guess for Mr. Weisman, I'm assuming maybe that kind of 18 months into it, are we going to be looking for some process improvement opportunities to maybe reallocate resources because we now have this awesome system to do things?
Yeah, actually, the HR department has already started before they finished up this contract, had gone through with Tiffany Augustine, the beginnings of a process mapping to figure out, well, how does this fit into our systems currently? Where are some of the identified areas where we can streamline and go paperless? So that has been part of the project since the beginning, when they initially started looking at this.
Thanks.
Dr. Hunter?
So are the cost savings that you referred to real reductions in costs?
I think some are hard dollars, yes. The answer is yes. They're not all hard dollars. Some of it is, if you don't have to touch it, four people don't have to touch it and we're paying $20 an hour and we save $5, I mean, do we have some of those softer costs? Yes, absolutely. What, at the end of the day, what will really be fabulous is when we can get good span of control reports, when we can get really good by location, demographics, by title, by job code, by supervisor code, we can really then do a much more robust workforce analysis to determine where we have too many people and where we don't have enough. That's going to save this district money.
Over time, we'll recognize the full $320,000 of savings, but in the beginning, part of it's just opportunity cost and the hope that we can redirect people's efforts to do something more productive than what they're currently doing.
I think that's a fair statement.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, the only, that's a good point. The only thing I'll say is that typically with these, you do find that you have less defects, less problems. And so that's not a direct cost, but assuming people have to go out and correct. But you're absolutely right, it's typically backloaded in the process in terms of the savings, also because year one, you've got all your investment. So typically, these things are paid back. In the private sector, probably over a four- or five-year schedule would be typical in terms of when you'd expect to hit neutral or even lower your costs.
I guess it would just require vigilance. I mean, if we're going into these tough budget times, it requires vigilance to be sure that people, I hate to have to jump on people because I know people are important, but if what we find is people aren't being productive, then we have to make some difficult decisions or certainly work with attrition to kind of ease some of that adaptation to more efficiencies.
No doubt. That's one of the good things that a good HRIS will give a management or a board is it will provide data. Right now, we have a lot of opinions and we have a lot of intuition. We don't have the level and the quality and the timeliness of accurate data that we need.
I have a question.
Ms. Jackson?
I'm looking at the breakdown of price and a couple of places it speaks to points. What do the points mean? Like one for the human resource training, it's 2,100 points, the timekeeping-
They sell their training by point, so it's, it kind of equals dollars. And so as, and just to elaborate just a bit, because we had a lot of conversation with regard to this, and Mr. Bushel was just dogged in making sure that we understood what these points were and how do we track the declining balance. There's a high likelihood that the training will be intermittent and as a result of that, they're not going to just come on Monday and go home on Friday and they will have spent their 8,100 points. So it's really important that as we went through this contract language, that we knew very precisely what those 8,100 points would get us and how we were going to track that declining balance for the total amount of $7,290.
All right, this will be presented at our June 13th board meeting. Any other new business items or agenda recommendations for tonight?
Do you mean January or June?
Did I say June or January? Well, we could do it. I'd say let's do it in January. What do you think?
For June.
I do want to remind the board members, we have a special board meeting on Monday, December 22nd at 5:00 that will be discussing the strategic vision and maybe some other items, too. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll take it.
Second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 8:34 PM.